We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It's Wednesday, March 29th, 2017. It's 10:00 a.m. This is a workshop, not a general meeting. There are two topics on it at this time for discussion, for presentation to the Commissioners and discussion and questions from the Commissioners. From my left, we have County Council, Huddle, Commissioner Gold, myself, Commissioner Huxley, to my right, Commissioner Boyce. On the first item on this workshop was or is County Administrator Job Description and Ordinance Discussion, and I presume County Council will be giving us some introductory comments on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the packet, there is a, there were two items, and this is a continuation. If you recall, there was a memo that was written probably a couple of weeks ago when we had a work session on it, I think, and the direction from the Board was to bring something back that was a draft of an ordinance and a job description. So the Personnel Officer and myself, the Personnel Officer worked on the job description primarily, and I worked on the ordinance primarily. We tried to coordinate the two. The draft ordinance that you have is intended to be a broad delegation of powers from the Board to the County Administrator position. And in that respect, the idea was to present, so the idea going back to the memorandum is that the Board essentially by statute has granted the powers to run all of the county functions. And then the idea of the Administrator is that the Board would then be delegating to this Administrator part of its authority to essentially run the county. And the idea in the draft was to present to the Board the option of a broad delegation and then have the Board today, after reviewing and discussing it, tell staff, myself, the Personnel Officer, where it wanted to make changes to the draft. And so what you have, and I can go down the ordinance. I don't know if you have it in front of you or not.
Now, you're not talking about your memorandum of February 2nd. That was about 11 or 10 page or?
I think that was the rationale behind.
Thanks. And well, that's where I referred to, we had had a prior work session on the County Administrator function. And that memorandum was prepared and presented at that meeting, and it gave a broad overview again of the county powers, whether or not a charter was required to have a County Administrator, that a County Administrator was not a required officer under the statutes for the Board, all those kind of things. And then it gave some descriptions. So I wouldn't prefer that the Board focus on that memorandum today. We've gone over that memorandum in the past. The memorandum was more or less background to remind the Board of where we'd been. And the next steps actually are a draft ordinance. It would be called a Draft Curry County Administrator Code. You should have that in front of you. That is it. It says County Administrator at the top, and then it's got these Xs on it to indicate future code section numbers. And so what it starts out is very basic, follows a format. One, the position of County Administrator is created. And it just says a County Administrator should be the Chief Administrative Officer of the county and shall be responsible only to the Board of Commissioners. So that's a very basic tenet of the County Administrator position. And then it says, "The Board of County Commissioners hereby delegates to the County Administrator broad authority to perform his or her job functions. The County Administrator is responsible to the Board for the manner of his or her administration. The Board reserves to itself all of its legislative and judicial or quasi-judicial authority unless expressly delegated. And this ordinance is to be interpreted as a broad delegation to the County Administrator of Board of Commissioner authority unless non-delegable or expressly reserved to the Board." So that's the general intent of this, is to have the County Administrator perform many, many, many of the Board functions. And so what are those functions typically? Well, the Board approves contracts. The Board approves hiring under our hiring freeze and under our previous rules and regulations. The Board approves policies and rules. So that, that is, the idea is to delegate to the County Administrator broadly. And then, other than this, it says, "Any additional delegation of the authority from the Board to the County Administrator shall be by duly adopted order ordinance." So this anticipates some future adjustments to this broad delegation. And then it tries to address prior delegations, prior delegations by the Board of Commissioners to other officers of the county shall remain in effect only where not inconsistent with this code. In the event of a potential conflict between a prior delegation and this code, the County Administrator shall bring the matter to the attention of the Board. And what that talks about is essentially department heads. Usually the county, and we'll get into that in a minute when we go down the list of powers and duties of a County Administrator. What it also says here is appointment of the County Administrator. It talks about the County Administrator shall be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the Board of County Commissioners. So in other words, it's essentially an at-will position, which are, I think, most of the department heads. "The relationship between the County Administrator and the county shall be set forth in this chapter and any employment agreement between the county and the County Administrator not inconsistent with this chapter." So what that anticipates is the possibility of an employment agreement. Now, an employment agreement is not necessary. I did not include in the materials a sample employment agreement between the Board and the County Administrator. They are pretty common though, and usually they include items that aren't in here. What I've seen is they describe perhaps a compensation packet. They're negotiated. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to the job description. But essentially, it's fairly common to have sometimes meal allowances, travel allowances, sometimes even vehicle allowances, and then also some provisions for, even though it's an at-will employment situation, a lot of these include severance pay in the event of a termination. The County Administrator is entitled to X number of months severance pay. Again, those aren't required. They're negotiable. And when we get to the job description, usually there's a salary range, but sometimes the job description say the catch-all, you know, salary commensurate with experience and qualifications, those kind of things. So it's, it's in the judgment of, of the Board. And then, "The County Administrator shall be appointed for an indefinite term and the County Administrator at-will and may be removed at the pleasure of the Board," you know, again, consistent with any applicable employment agreement. So it says, "Any applicable employment agreement doesn't require an employment agreement, but it leaves open the possibility because it may, it may be that that's how it, how it happens."
Do most counties have employment agreements or administrators have employment agreements? Because I heard that, didn't you say Milliman does not or never has?
He's said on record in meetings here that he in 30 years has never had a, an employment agreement.
Okay, that's what I saw.
Like I said, they're not required, but they are out there. And I have a feeling that if you have some candidates from other places, they will be talking about that with you. So it's, it's just, it's just a topic for discussion. I think it's, it's part of the, you know, it's, it's just part of the nature of these type of positions. The fact that you even discuss with Milliman whether he had one, you know, kind of again reflects that they're out there. They can, you know, they can come into play. I think the Board should be prepared, if they do a procurement for one of these positions, to talk to potential candidates about that. I think it's, I think it's a, it's a potential issue.
I think just for, you know, correction there, at least from my, my experience, I did not approach or talk directly to Gary Milliman. I came out in passing conversation or at somewhere, but I didn't, you know, contact him to ask him.
Thanks. No, I know. You said it was made on the record. You said on the record somewhere.
On more than one occasion.
Sure, on more than, regardless, it's part of the conversation in these kind of jobs. So then, let me see here, "The Board Member Interaction with the County Administrator and Employees." This would be a significant change from how things are done. "In the exercise of their authority as members of the governing body of the county, Board Members may individually or as a group in a public meeting discuss fully and freely with the County Administrator any matter pertaining to county affairs or the interests of the county." And then, this is again, the departure. "Board Members may not direct any county employee other than the County Administrator or County Council in performance of their duties. Any direction to the County Administrator or Council shall be by majority vote of the Board."
So bottom line, that's just saying that we have one employee, or we would have one employee, and that would be the manager. And everybody else would be, not everybody, but the non-elected employees would be under the manager.
Right. And so, correct. The County Administrator is responsible for the Board, and then it will talk later that the County Administrator oversees all of the other appointed, not elected, department heads, which currently is done by the Board and then through the, partly with the assistance of the Liaison Commissioner, however that, however that works.
And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because on other Boards that I've served on, sometimes the Commissioners or those in charge try to intervene and take over the manager's position, and that doesn't work out so well.
No, sure, sure. So, so then, and here, technically, we have the Commissioners as a group performing all the functions of the manager currently.
Exactly.
So what this would do would, you know, in a sense, free up the Commissioners to do higher level policy things and let a manager do the day-to-day administrative tasks, the hiring, the firing, the contracting, the disciplining, the enforcement of the rules, these kind of things that, you know, go on day-to-day. Let me see here. So.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
When is it appropriate time for Commissioners to ask questions or speak or?
Well, I think through this, you know, in the process, I think that's, that is the purpose for the Commissioners to be able to, and unless it was requested otherwise, which I think would be the exception to the norm, it's just to, as Commissioner Gold has done here, to request to, to ask questions of, of the presenter, in this case, County Council, and carry on a dialogue back and forth.
I have about five minutes of what I would like to offer on my research and my position.
You want to do that, I'll put that back to County Council. You want to go through and then have Commissioner Boyce do that, or if it was a question related, you know, to us?
Right. Thanks for the preface, Commissioner Boyce. I think if, if, if you wait, that sounds more like deliberation than really just questions. And I think when it comes time for that and for the Board to discuss it, but if you had any questions about really the, how the provisions in this would, would carry out, but other than the idea of the policies behind the position and those kind of things, I'm really not speaking to that. That's for the Board to decide. I'm just describing the creation and the technicalities of the, of the position. So I think a five-minute discussion on your part would be more like deliberation for Board discussion versus questions for me. That's just without knowing further.
I would sort of agree based on that, so why don't we?
Well, and I hope I'm not interrupting too much.
Well, you're interrupting with a question, so if I had a question.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. All right. So, so then, let me see here. "Board Member Interaction with County Administrator and Employees." "Board Members may not direct any county employee." So again, currently, the Board can, as a, as a body, give direction to county employees. Here, only County Administrator. And this says, "Or County Council." And that's, this is the first time, and there's a couple of places in here where, I know it says the County Administrator would be essentially the manager of the department heads, the appointed department heads. It kind of carves out County Council, and again, the role of County Council, my role, is to represent the organization which really is empowered by the voters in the Board of Commissioners, the three of you when you're performing your functions, and all the other elected and appointed officials when they're performing their functions. But essentially, what this anticipates here is there may be some, some task that the Board wants legal advice on, that they could direct me in without going through the County Administrator. You don't, that, this does not have to be there. You could strike this part about the County Council and have all the County Council work go through the County Administrator if you want. So it's just a matter of, of what the Board prefers. Where I came from, there was a city manager, and again, cities and counties are different. The cities don't have all the elected officials and whatnot. But where I came from, the city attorney was hired and fired by the County Administrator, but served again the city council and the organization of the city. So really, what I did then is I gave all of my legal advice to the city council through the city manager, with the understanding of my duty to my ultimate client that if the city manager was in any way, you know, just changing, for lack of a better word, or withholding my advice from my ultimate client, the organization, I could go directly to the ultimate client, the organization. So really, this type of provision to me would operate from, from County Council to the Board as normal, whether I had a county manager, County Administrator, between me and you or not. But what this does do is it says that, that you could give direction to the County Council without going through the County Administrator, which, again, you may need a particular Administrator in place to decide whether that's a good idea or not, but that's an option. So that's one, that's a first place where pursuant to this draft, the County Council is treated slightly differently than the other elected and appointed officials, or excuse me, appointed officials, not elected. So then we get into some of the qualifications, residents. And residence is a, is a fairly key, common provision for County Administrators. "Shall be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners solely on the basis of his or her executive and administrative qualifications and experience. Need not be a resident of the county or the state prior to appointment, but within 30 days of the time of the appointment, they shall reside outside the county only with express permission of the Board. And then, the salary is fixed commensurate with his or her experience and responsible to the office." So, and that salary can be set by the Board before hiring or, you know, in the, in the job description or budget or through negotiations. But again, it's very common to have the County Administrator required to be a resident of, of the county that they're administering, and I think that's a decent policy. It doesn't have to be, but the Board would have to make an express decision not to, not to require that. So then the powers and duties, and this is again, the broad delegation that we talked about earlier, and it's not exclusive, but it goes on for probably a good page, maybe page and a half. And it talks about coordinating activities of all other county elected departments. So it talks about coordinating with the, with the other elected departments, devising ways and means whereby efficiency and economy may be secured in the operation of all offices and departments. "County Administrator shall exercise no authority over the actions of elected county officials while they're performing the duties of their offices." So it, again, it treats the elected officials differently from the appointed officials. And then, let's see here, "Directing of the activities of all other county-appointed administrative departments." So this is typically where your County Administrators, your city managers, your, you know, public, I don't know if it's a port manager, these school, I don't know what they're called.
Superintendent.
School superintendents. Thanks. They, this is a classic, what's typically called a CEO-type functions. "They select, appoint, supervise, discipline, dismiss all county administration staff and all employees. County Administrator has no such power over County Council or an elected county officer." So this was discussed at the management meeting yesterday. And there are some questions, and there was also some requests for clarifications on these points. And it says, "Select, appoint, supervise, discipline, or dismiss all county administration staff and all employees." So the county administration staff would be, you know, the BACH office is what I think of that. But then all employees would be all the employees of all the other departments. So usually the way the, if you look at the, oh, I'll call it a flow chart or something, you would have the Board of Commissioners, you'd have the County Administrator, then a line going sideways with all the departments, and then the employees under each department head. The way this is written, and it's, it's possible, it has a direct line from the County Administrator to all the different employees. The department heads and the other electeds, and this also anticipates perhaps a possibility that the County Administrator could do some level of supervision over the employees of the other electeds. I think, number one, statutorily, and we've talked about the statute on the sheriff a little earlier, I think there's a statute that calls out the sheriff separately and says that the sheriff oversees all of his department employees. The only thing I found for the Board is that it can set the number of deputies and employees. And so, and then the other part about here is that the other department heads would, I think, prefer that they also have the main role in hiring and terminating and disciplining their employees. What I've seen and what might make sense is if we adjusted this somehow to say that the, that, that no final hire or termination is effective until, you know, some form is signed by the County Administrator so they know. But I see a question coming up. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Just a, well, it's a suggestion. I think, I think it should be done. I'll even offer to do it, but back to your, you mentioned the proposed flow chart where there were questions that came up. I think we should absolutely have a proposed organizational chart.
Organizational chart, that's what I'm thinking of.
Because a picture tells a thousand words, and you can get a much better idea in one page of the, of the structure.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Sure. I can try to put one of those together. I don't think that'd be beyond my capabilities. I didn't have one for you today, so sorry about that. It might have been helpful.
Well, I just think it, it's a good tool, and easier to explain. And the questions that came up might not have come up necessarily if there had been a chart so people could actually see better. We need a new chart anyway. The county doesn't even have a current organizational chart.
Okay. I, I thought we did.
Yeah, kind of, sort of.
Is it invalid in some way?
I, I'm, I've seen one. I didn't, yeah, I didn't have it.
Well, there's two different ones, and two different structures, and two different dates. And many of them, again, you have three people, one person answering to three people with the structure, so.
And that's the most recent date.
That's 2014, I think, is the most recent.
Well, good. So, so it's a, it's a good conversation to have because we are coming up to budget time, and I heard from the gallery, the County Accountant mentioned that these flow charts or the organization charts are in the budget, so we can, we can take a look at that. And so, we can work these together. And I have, I have a feeling that if the Board goes in the direction of the County Administrator, there will be some budget discussion on that anyway. So all of these will be choices coming up in the next month or two that we're facing, so. So then again, it says, "A County Administrator has no such power over County Council or an elected county officer." And again, County Council owes the duty to the organization, and unless delegated to the County Administrator, that means the three Commissioners when acting, you know, in their capacity and the majority of them. So that's where the, the question would be, and so County Council would serve the, the Board and also would serve all the elected officer, or all the elected officers, and also the appointed officers and the County Administrator as normal, but the Board would still have direct oversight over County Council unless you don't want it. And like I said, there's, this is an option. This is why we're having this work session to talk to you about some of these options. So those are the ideas. And again, the other part about it is it talks about here, if you look under this, directing the activity, hiring, firing. It talks about recruitment, appointment, corrective action, preparation, administration of annual Department Director Performance Evaluations, setting and adjusting the salaries, administrative department directors, annual merit adjustments with ranges approved by the Board. "Before taking action on final appointment and dismissal of a Department Director, Administrator shall advise the Board of the cause and the process to be used in an action, and then adjusting salaries at the County Council in accordance with the Board's performance evaluation." Again, there's a cutout there. It could, you could easily just take out anything in here about County Council and just have me under the auspices of a County Administrator if that's what the Board does. And then again, all that would be with the assistance, the preparation of, you know, discipline and the recruitment and those kind of things, all with the assistance of personnel and legal typically. The other thing, this is fairly common, act as a county budget officer. If you remember, in the budget laws, it says, "A county shall have a budget officer." And if there's no officer, then it's the, I think, the Chair of, of the Board. We have typically the county accountant as a county budget officer. Where I've seen the, the work, the interplay between a city manager and the city finance director, typically, the finance director is doing the nuts and bolts, but the city manager has a little more policy-type input into, you know, where they think. So some of the decisions that are made by the Board during the budget, and some of the decisions that the county accountant here will be asking the Board to make during the budget, typically those decisions aren't necessarily made, but there's a typically a strong recommendation on the part of the County Administrator what they think the decision should be versus, "You guys tell us what you want." So, so that's what I've seen. And so even though the County Administrator is acting as a budget officer, a lot of the workup is in conjunction with the county accountant. And usually it's a, it's a two-part discussion. Usually the County Administrator would sit at the dais with the Board, and the county account would be walking through the numbers and the budget items along with the other departments presenting their budgets. So really, it's not uncommon for the County Administrator to be the county budget officer. "Prepare and administer management employee compensation benefit plans, planning and directing, evaluation of the development of internal management systems and procedures." Again, these are, you know, chain of command. "Preparing administrative regulations and policies to carry out efficient operation of the county, enforcing ordinances, orders, rules, regulations, procedures, and policies adopted by the Board." This would answer who is responsible for code enforcement. It would be the county manager or persons under the county manager or County Administrator direction. Because that's an area where we're kind of, I don't want to say floundering, but we're, we're sure have been treading water for sure in, in that department for the last year or so, and maybe before that.
Floundering would be good.
Okay, sure. Then preparing and submitting annual report on the status of county operations and other reports upon the request of the Board. Now, this is, we recently had different Commissioners presenting, you know, state of the county and those kind of things. This would put it in the, in the role of the county manager. I think there could be dual roles on this. It doesn't say that the Board could also not prepare a state of the county, or the Chair could not prepare a state of the county. That could be something that'd be worked out. But it's, it is also very common, once you have a county manager, that they attend a lot of these, you know, Chamber of Commerce Rotary, a lot of the civic organizations. They go to other meetings and they represent to those groups what's happening, you know, at the county. And they're a liaison a lot of times between those groups and the county in conjunction with Board members. I don't think there's an absolute split there. And certainly, you all are elected officials and answer to the people, so there's, there's, it's not creating a wall between the constituency and the Board at all. But it's just relaying communication. And here again, it says, "Performing community relation functions include internal publications, external communications, media liaison, you know, community organization liaison, advisory committee liaison, citizen assistance, information center." Very much typical administrative tasks, you know, probably managing website management, those kind of things. So very, very standard administrative oversight. And again, each one of these pieces, and we'll see it near the end, the County Administrator can delegate to the individual departments as, as seen fit. "Preparing and managing Board agenda, so, and performing clerk of the Board function, meeting functions, providing other staff for the Board. Providing intergovernmental relations staff functions for the Board, so if we have to interface with..." staff functions for the board, so if we have to interface with state, federal, or local other, or even districts. Overseen economic development functions. Again, these can be delegated, but at least they would be overseeing, and, and if it were delegated to a department head or department heads, it would fall under the, under the job description of overseeing the, the performance of the department heads. Again, these are options. Executing, enforcing, administering all contracts and grants. This is something, again, if, if you know the, the grants and the contracts, that goes back to enforcing the rules as well. So really, the executive function, the administrative function, those are the enforcement rules. And these are the non, you know, the sheriff is a chief executive officer by statute of the county, but that's typically in a criminal law enforcement context and not necessarily in enforcing the rules and contracts civilly of the, of the Board of Commissioners.
Let me make just one comment regarding taking care of the grants. Commissioner Huxley brought up the point that we are going to be liable for quite a bit of money because those grants were, maybe.
Maybe, with what we know now.
Were not administered correctly. So having someone in charge of all of this would, I think, be advisable.
Sure. No, I think, I think so, and in that respect, I think the county accountant has taken on, you know, voluntarily and out of a sense of duty, I think, oversight of a lot of the grants that, you know, hasn't necessarily been, been followed up with. So, yeah, so there are, again, another reason, people say, "Why do we need a county administrator?" For, we pointed out a few reasons already. Administering risk management program for the county and its service districts. Again, currently that's done by the county council, and I have a feeling a county administrator would, you know, delegate that to county council and then just get reports and oversight, and just making sure things aren't being missed and things are being done. Attend all board meetings and keep the board informed of pertinent matters related to administrative management of the county. Seems like that could have gone higher up in the list. These aren't in any order of priority. Directing the use, operation, maintenance, control, and custody of all county and district property, buildings, works, and improvements. So this, again, we have a building maintenance division, and this would be where the county manager would oversee that. But also, we have, you know, access, you know, all the county property. Right now, you know, this meeting room property is being kind of administered by one group. We have, you know, entry and exit locks and things administered by another. This would centralize a lot of those functions that are kind of handled piecemeal right now, would have one point of contact for that. And the, if you remember where I said this is meant as a broad delegation, but if there's a conflict, and this says, "Custody, control, maintenance of all county and district property, buildings, works, and improvements." I would probably scratch district, except for we have a couple of districts, like the transit district and the, I don't know if the fair board is necessarily a district, but we have some other property, but it says, "Building works and improvements." We do have, I think, a formal order, ordinance that has established the, the roadmaster as having authority over our roads and the equipment for the roads and the road fund. And so I thi, I think that would, you know, it says, "This is meant to," what does it say? "Prior delegations shall remain in effect only where not inconsistent with this code." So I think there would need to be clarification on which prior delegations would survive, but I think once the county administrator come on, came online, they would try to suss that out and bring back action. And then, again, here's subdelegation of authority, so the county administrator is able to subdelegate, not inconsistent with the code. Temporary absence, if there's a temporary absence, they, the, the county administrator can designate. So if they're going to be either gone on vacation or some medical leave, they can appoint someone during the temporary until further order of the board. And then if there's a per, permanent vacancy, if, if, you know, they are gone for whatever reason, then the board can designate an acting county administrator until such time as they get an appointment county administrator. So really, the, that's a fairly standard county administrative position. The one direction I think that I would need most from the board is on the employment part. And I know you say you'd like a flow chart before doing so, but a, a flow chart is drawn out to put the words on the paper. So I think by changing the words, it would change the flow chart as a board. So that's really, I think, from, and going, from going over the managers, besides just, you know, a general philosophy of, "Do we really need one of these positions?" And I think that's a policy choice for the board. There was a, you know, the question of, you know, if we have one, the nuts and bolts of the relation between the different department heads and, and the county employees. So that's really all I had on the, oh, sorry, there, there was also a job description, I think. I don't know if the personnel officer is here. Julie, were you prepared to talk about the job description, or did you just want me to go through it?
It's just there to be presented.
Okay.
Are you going to read the whole thing?
I, 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 you know, I, I'll, I'll reserve questions. If the board has any questions about the job description, I can answer those, but it is something that the board would adopt, and it is, it is something that, let me see what it says here. It says, under, here's the position summary. Sorry, Mr. Commissioner, I guess I am. I'll, I'll try to go through it. Do you all have it in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
"Under the direction of the Board of Commissioners, sure as it administrative head of the county government executes all administrative tasks of the Board of Commissioners, plans and directs all county functions through department heads, including financial and personnel activities of the county, provides assistance to the board regarding policy decisions and their implementation." And then duties and responsibilities. It also says, "It may involve other duties which are not listed may be assigned as required." That's right off the bat. "Directs and coordinates over all management of county government in accordance to policies set by the board." So this still has the board doing policies and the manager executing them. "Acts as liaison between the board and appointed department heads as directed elected officials, public, federal, state, local government agencies, formulates and recommends new policies," but again, the board would adopt them. "Hires and supervises all appointed department heads, develop performance expectations." That doesn't mention the other employees, and again, I think it makes sense in a flow to have, I, I think having a county administrator be the final say-so on either a hire, and especially a termination, to make sure all the Ts have been crossed and Is have been dotted, makes a lot of sense in, in a lot of ways. Get another set of Is on, on, you know, important employment decisions. "Directs and facilitates development and preparation of county short and long-range plans, prepares and submits annual reports, oversees and conducts research studies for new services." And again, that's where going out and looking to see things, doing, you know, new ways to do things. "Oversees recruitment, selection, appointment of county employees, directs and participates all employee relations, labor relation matters." And that's usually where they are part of the bargaining team on the collective bargaining. "Recommends and ensures uniform enforcement of orders, rules." We've seen that. Again, we, we prepared these in coordination with each other. "Oversees preparation of the county budget, works in concert with county accountant to link the budget with board policy, evaluates budget proposals, those kind of things. And oversees timely accurate development of agenda for the board." So those are the main things, and we left it open that there's others. Supervise appointment department heads, knowledge of, you know, principal methods, technique, public administration, public policy, budget, public budget, administration, personnel, and management, community organizations, citizen involvement, state, federal, local rules and regulations, develop implement policies, interpreting, explaining policies, establishing, maintaining working relationships with those contacted in the course of work, communicating clearly, concisely, both orally and writing, developing strategies, supervising training, evaluating staff, using computers and software, ability to make effective speeches and presentations on complex topics, adjust priority changes to remain calm and use good judgment during confrontational or high-pressure situations, maintain confidentiality, make decisions independently according with policies, establish and maintain effective working relationships with elected public officials, department heads, employees, other agencies, et cetera. And then it says, "Education or experience," and this is pretty common, "master's degree in public business administration or related field, six or more years progressively responsible experience in public administration or management, or," and this is where it allows the board flexibility, "or any satisfactory equivalent of experience in training," and then having a valid driver's license. And then there's some physical demands. So really.
Where'd the 30 pounds come from?
30 pounds probably came from standard, you know, yep.
I just thought that was interesting, that they should be able to lift 30 pounds.
I, I have to tell you, I've seen some.
Talking British.
I've seen some that say, pound sterling. I've seen some that say, must be able to, you know, stand for eight hours at a time or sit for eight hours at a time, or must be able to kneel, or, you know, all kinds of things. There's just a, a lot of strange add-ons there. I think those all came out of covering bases when, you know, someone said, "Well, I'm not going to lift that," or, or something. Who, who knows? You know? I, I think the idea there is there can be some physical requirements of the job. I mean, probably doesn't say ability to climb ladders, but I think in my day, I've seen them climb ladders, stand on chairs, you know, do all, change light bulbs, and just do all kinds of things, so. But that's really all I had. So, Mr. Chair and the rest of the commissioners, I'm really just looking for primary direction on how deeply do you want the county administrative position to interrelate with all county employees, or would you prefer that be done through the, the departments and the elected officials? That's really seemed to be the main, one of the main sticking points, but did you also have any other ideas or limitations or, or pullbacks that, that you wanted on this?
You know, I asked that question when I was contacting other counties, and it seemed to be that the elected officials, if they needed help with the employees and that kind of thing, that they could get it from the administrator, but it wasn't mandatory that they do so.
Okay.
And, but generally speaking, they worked together closely.
Okay.
To put it that way. They were cooperative, one with another.
Commissioner Boyce, you want to go ahead with the?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First things first, I want to recognize our new associate here, John Jesuit. We have, sir, we have too many rules, but the only rule is don't mess with my pins, okay? That's it. So, Council Huddle, thank you for that presentation. I, I'm glad now that you read the job description. That is a tremendous list and maybe spot-on, but I, I've not reviewed, this is the form of a question, I haven't reviewed anything in the form of a staff that would require because it seems like a tremendous list of under-essential responsibilities and duties. And so have we thought about that and, and how that might affect our BACH office and the general needs behind that?
Well, I think the thought, and again, my thought was, I can only talk about my thoughts, but my thought was that the county administrator would reside in the BACH office and be served by the BACH staff and then the various department heads. I, I see this person as managing a lot of, a lot of things, all the department heads, and then we have a managing grants. But for instance, in the management of grants, I think the county administrator would task the county accountant with doing some of those things that the county accountant has take, taken on.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
In, in managing, you know, the contracts and enforcing the contracts, the county administrator would task me with writing the, you know, lawyer letters and going into court if we had to and those kind of things. And, you know, if there was doing the property, they would task, you know, our building maintenance division personnel with, you know, fix that window, or do this, or do that, and make sure all this is done, or have you done that, and, and this kind of thing. For instance, we had recently an issue with our generator, you know, and I think the, you wouldn't have the county administrator out there working on the generator, or, or even contracting to fix a generator, but the county administrator would be oversighting on, on that type of thing. So I see them more as just a real clearinghouse of information, a concentration point of communication with the board, so that the board didn't have to go to five different people and say, "What's going on with this?" They go to one person, and that person goes to those five and says, "Tell me what's going on," and then boom, right back up to the board.
So bottom line, he delegates and then makes sure things get done.
More or less, yes. And so that, and, and currently, that's the function of the board. And we have a liaison situation right now where, if you really look at it, the liaison commissioners don't really have a ton of authority acting on their own.
Right.
Except in a very limited circumstance. So it takes, you know, every two weeks to come back to the board to get a direction. It's, it's fairly cumbersome, whereas with a, with the county administrator, think can happen instantaneously and simultaneously, so.
Yeah, it's very hard for three people to manage when they can't communicate with one another.
Except every two weeks.
And cannot make any decisions unless it's in a public meeting, so.
Oh, correct, correct. It's, it's cumbersome management method, definitely.
You still have the floor.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Instantly on the, the generator thing, I climbed the fence and figured out how to do that next time, and not a, not a big deal.
Sure.
But still vague on the amount of staff that would be required, and so that's, I think that's something that we would need to work on. I've been back and forth on this issue, and I'm, I'm going to really come out pretty strong. I will offer the board for the record a written list of why I think it's, I'm in opposition and why I think it's not in a good, a good creation for the county, at least not for six or seven months after we, excuse me, three or four months after we get through the budget process. When I was elected, two reasons, I'm here almost every day and some weekends, because that's what I promised I would do, and there is so much work. And this position is, for commissioners, full-time. Not a conclusive list, but primarily three things that I think we really need to focus on, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But today's workshop makes me, the, the content of these two agenda items makes me a little bit uneasy because, you know, I hold up the newspapers because we really need to pay attention to what's going on in our communities, and I think we have terribly mixed-up priorities. I'll politely participate today, but I'm just protesting a little bit that I think the important issues that our people are dealing with, we need to get a handle on. So back to the full-time position as commissioner, in, in my view, it takes one full-time in the office. It takes one traveling around the state almost full-time, and it takes a third one just to go to the local meetings in all three communities and to sincerely participate. And then with those three positions, we faithful report back to the board. And I'm willing to do any one or any two of the three, but I can't do justice to all three. And I think that in itself, along with priorities, would, would be a, a good schedule for workshop, probably also after the budget process. I don't want to pay a county administrative officer twice what I get paid to do half the work and is unelected, and that went to the Measure 876 issue when people essentially voted that down. And if it is a sound principle and a, and a good concept, I think it should go, we should at least consider that going back before the vote of the people, again, and probably on a standalone voter option. The present staff, I think we have enough people in place. I'm, I'm in the office every day, essentially every day, with our, our new temporary person here, hopefully to soon become full-time, with yourself, Council Huddle, with Brenda Starbird and myself. I think that's a team that at least to be, again, focusing back on the budget process, we can handle the work, keep the welcome mat open, be attentive to the public needs, the doors open, and I, I don't see us falling behind there. We're all pretty good at making the agenda process work, and we're getting the leg up on that. Elected versus appointed, non-elected staff, they don't have to be transparent, and we do. And sometimes it, it could actually render the commissioners ineffective, where they, for the most part, become high-paid ribbon cutters. That's a big concern of mine. The firing, I particularly have a tough time giving up my responsibility to the voters in, in the firing process. I, that's going to be pretty hard for me to walk away from, because I think that's my responsibility to know what's going on. I'm doing my part within the, the department heads that I represent. No need for micromanagement, 90 percent, excuse me, 90 percent of the people that didn't need micromanagement are now gone. There's no one left for an expensive CAO to manage, in my view. And he or she is going to be very expensive, and again, I'm going to, I'm going to emphasize I'm not sure about the staff that we require to follow through this job description, that I think we're ultimately and clearly hired and required to fulfill. It's going to be, it's obviously will be difficult to recruit a good CAO, in my view, and get until we get our financial house in order, someone like the sheriff battling to. to find and keep good deputies, they don't want to come to a board that is struggling, a county that is financially in trouble. And we're lucky we haven't lost more deputies, and I'm concerned we will. If we don't get our house in order, yeah, they'll be gone. And I'm going to go back to the newspaper today, Crime Wave. Some of us have been saying this for two years now, and have had legitimate concern without saying the sky is falling or overstating, but here's one. Criminals were found in Crescent City. I wonder why? Coos County's in trouble. Josephine County is in serious trouble. We still have time, and so I'm, I'm just wondering why we're not discussing this today, why we're not discussing the Callstrom, CBAC, Citizens and Budget Advisory Committee proposals, preparing for the August, excuse me, April 5th meeting. Priorities. How can we help Port of Brookings? How can we find revenue? Offered three weeks ago. Could we just look at a sales tax? Just do the research. I'm not in favor of a sales tax. I, I need to promote to the board how inevitable, or excuse me, how important the research should be. And I got a request to bring back more information, which is not unreasonable, but we lost three weeks. If it does have merit, if there is a good plan out there. And we're, we are really, we're really under a time crunch here. If we could get something in place, it would have to be, to go before the voters in November, would have to be done no later than August 1st. We're the CEOs and CFOs, and again, we're elected to do both. And I'm open for questions. I appreciate that this is a workshop, and we can have respectful dialogue, even descending or disagreeing views. But I want to, I want to make sure everybody understands that based on significant research, I don't think it's the right thing for the county right now. And I'm going to challenge my fellow board members to take the lead in a more active role in the day-to-day requirements of this job. Thank you.
Before I comment, did you have any other comments back on the, you know, on the subject of the administrator?
Well, in talking to other general law counties, I think it's important to note that if you are a general law county, you can have an administrator. In fact, over half of the general law counties do have administrators, and they are very effective. Some of the negative aspects that people were bringing up is that these administrators don't stay once they come. Well, I found that there was longevity in all of the counties that I talked to, and they were very happy with what was going on. So, I think, you know, we've been doing it the same way forever, and we really can't expect different results if we continue on the same path. I think we need to move towards a manager. I think it's much more efficient and would bring in accountability that we need in this county.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gold. I believe we're, excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I ask, thank you. Responsible. I think we're responsible for that accountability on a daily basis, and we are elected, and that, that puts a tremendous burden on us. It doesn't have to be a burden. It can be routine and spontaneous to have that accountability and that transparency. I think the data out there on longevity, I heard recently, it's a sunset, sunrise aspect where who they attract and when they stay, why they don't stay, and sometimes when they leave, they leave a lot of damage behind. And it's, then the counties are left with a catch-up deal, and that data is readily available. There are some good success stories in Oregon, I agree, and it may be the best thing for Curry County. My position is, we are not ready now. We have, I'm going to, I'm going to be promoting a priority workshop just as soon as we can get that on the agenda. And I will be lobbying you both for what I think the priority should be, and I think you'll agree on many of them. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few, well, quite a few comments. On the point of the statistics on which county has this and which county doesn't have this, there is, and I gave this to county council several months back, and if you don't have it, I got this through Rocky McBay with the Association of Oregon Counties. It's a one-sheet page.
All right, I think I have that.
That will show you, okay, of the thirty-six counties in Oregon, nine are home rule charters. Seven of the nine have appointed administrators. One has the chair as being the administrator of the board. So that's a high, high percent. I say seven of nine, one, two, three, four, five. Six are appointed, one sits chair, that's seven, and the other two, two do not have. Of the general law counties, which was interesting, very interesting when I first saw this, we talk about dysfunction with three members of a governing body and quorum requirements, so that basically in a three-member governing body, no commissioner can talk to the other commissioner out of a public meeting. I say, you know, you can talk, you know, "How was your trip? How was this?" but not on county business. If there were five, then you could talk to any of the other individual commissioners. But of the nineteen, there are ten general law counties of those nineteen that have appointed administrators. Two of those nineteen have the chair as the administrator. So certainly a higher percent, well over fifty percent, have administrators. Again, those are general law. Of those nineteen, only one, although you can change, it can be changed, only one has more than three members. Only one county has five, have five board of commissioners. The other eighteen have three, and the one is Clackamas County. There are also still the remainder, and which is three, four, five, six, seven, eight, not, eight have general courts or county courts.
Is Morrow listed in those? Because Morrow just recently changed to general law.
Okay, well Morrow's up here, so there's now twenty general law.
Right, and they have an administrator.
Morrow, there are, there were, what did I say, eight that were general law slash county courts, where they have a judge as full-time and two commissioners. So those are the structures. In regards to the, certainly, the, the job description, I, I'm not, I don't feel it's, it's a satisfactory job description that is here. I think that the proposed or draft three-page ordinance has a lot more of the specifics. It should be very specific items and tasks that should be included, and less of the, I call it the frou-frou, the ambiguity, the ambiguous oversees, you know, overseas conducts research studies, well, what's included, what's not included. I think there could be lots of improvements there. And I would like to see, I'm, I do support a county administrator, manager. I would still say an organizational chart can answer a lot of the questions, or some, you know, certainly the topics that have come up here. And it's easy to revise. That I would like to see, and the reason I gave some of these statistics here is that there are so many. I would like to see, or request, to see copies of the various county job descriptions for administrator slash managers, to get the physical, have the physical copies.
Actually, Jefferson and Morrow were kind of used as a template.
Okay, but I just, you know, like to see, that's two of, what, of twenty, twenty-five that have appointed, or appointed administrators. I'd like to see toward that end more from county council, although I like, you know, again, some of the specifics in there. If we have that many, what are some of the other ordinances or, you know, authorities, be it not an ordinance or an ordinance, authorities that have been used and are in place in some of these other counties? That's what I would like to see, to spend the time to do this. I think it need, and then an organizational chart, which is easily changed, but so we can look and say, "Okay, this is this concept, this is that concept." If you have two or three different scenarios proposed, it's extremely easy to have two or three draft organizational charts, so you can look as you're speaking and explaining it and see and understand. That's what I would like, before I would support going, going further on this, on, on a comment, on the, on the draft ordinance, which was, again, it was three pages in the packet, and the first page was titled, "County Administrator." There was, could this, also this position or service be provided via an IGA with another municipality or parties? We mentioned some of these counties that have administrators. I had talked to one, I don't remember what the county was, it was about a year ago. They were, I believe they were Clatsop County, I think. But anyway, they were home rule. The individuals there were very helpful. They had said that they had just, their administrator had resigned, not under stress, you know, duress or anything, or contention, but was moving on, but they had some others that had applied. It was just, it, it was experience, a contact for experience. Don't make basically the same mistake somebody else has made. If you can talk to them and they can tell you what they did wrong, what they, what they did to fix it. But I'd like to see some more hard copy documentation from, again, job descriptions from the other counties with administrators, and some of the other authorities, be it an ordinance or whatever the mechanism was to institute the administrator, and then in some cases, the, certainly that would be, in some of the home rule counties also, I'd like to see some additional copies to read.
So if I could, Mr. Chair, follow-up question there. You have your list, and I've seen that list, and I have that list. Are you asking for every copy of every ordinance of every county administrator?
No.
You said some. Which, can you, can you just tell me which ones you want off of that list, so I can, I don't want to, I don't want to have to try to guess.
I would say for your, okay.
Just tell me which ones.
Just, I will get, I don't know which ones by name. I would, you know, I could, I could.
Oh, you're asking, I can help on that. I'm very interested.
I could say half a dozen.
A half a dozen what? Which ones?
I'll give back to you with the specific names, then. I'll have to do the research.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, okay. I apologize.
How about some with the same demographics?
I apologize. I just need more guidance, then. I need some more information. And I need specifics.
My question to you, you know, back to your question, is clearly you have amongst the, what's it called, when you go out on a internet search amongst attorneys in Oregon? What's it called?
A listserv?
A listserv, thank you. You know, for some input back on what you feel, okay, would be good examples of a half a dozen different ones, versus me.
I, I won't do that, Mr. Chair, because then we're going to get right back into this. Do you understand where I'm going with that?
Okay.
I've given you my, I've given you my draft here, and you're saying you need more. And if I came back to you with my picks, you'd say, "I need more."
Okay, I'll get back to you with the names.
I would like you to do it right here in this meeting. You have the list right in front of you.
Where did yours come, where did yours come from?
Primarily Clackamas County, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I would like from Clatsop County.
Okay.
Do you have a name that you, Commissioner Gold?
I would say Jefferson, because their demographics are pretty close to ours.
Jefferson.
And Morrow is just new at this, so.
And they're pretty happy right now.
And I will, again, I apologize for my tone, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no, that's true.
In February, you saw the memo. I presented, you know, examples from Jackson County. You had an opportunity to say you wanted to see multiples. Instead, the board said, "Bring us back," you know, "a draft." We brought you back a single draft. But yes, if the board, we spent perhaps an hour going over the code and the, and the sample job description. And if we were to give you a comprehensive public comparison of however many there are, nine, twelve, a dozen, I don't know if there's enough hours in the day to, to do that. So I would like some, some direction.
Did you say Jefferson?
Jefferson was the one that had pretty close to our same demographics.
That's Clatsop, Jefferson, Morrow. Now, what I got, again, the most...
But one thing that we...
...you know, information this time was going over the three-page draft that was in this packet. And I assume that is the latest draft of information. It's certainly later than the, than the memo.
Now, now, true, Mr. Chair. It is, it is later than the memo. It was informed on the discussion from the board at the prior work session.
Correct.
And I tried to be more specific this time. The memo was broad and general and was an overview. This is a specific presentation. It is based on a survey of two or three, and I think Clackamas, I looked at Jackson County. Jackson County is a charter county, but they do not have a county administrator position in their charter. Their board, their board came up with a ordinance to create the administrative position.
I'd like Lane County.
Okay.
Which is home rule, and they have an appointed administrator.
Okay.
Do you have any that you might be interested in, Commissioner Boyce?
I think you've done okay. I'm glad to hear you bring up Clatsop. Clackamas, Jackson, Lane, of course, are all counties greatly larger than Curry County, which may or may not have a bearing. Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for you, though, if I may. You had mentioned one of the previous CAOs moving on, and you said it was not under duress. Can you just shed a little light on that?
Well, all I can tell you is, and I, that's when I said, I think it was Clatsop County that I'd spoken with, and that was back a year or so ago, at least a year. And in the conversation, I wasn't calling about, you know, a home rule county. I was calling about an accounting, I think, an accounting information, a question. It flowed in the conversation to the person mentioning that. And so it was, I think it was an individual in their accounting department.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, I'm just trying to think as we're talking here, and I'm wondering if there's a different way we can accomplish what we all want to accomplish, or what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
So, the way I would find these other counties' codes and ordinances and job descriptions is to go online and look at them and ask them and those kind of things. It's hard for me, again, to try to guess what's going to satisfy your desire for the more information or other terms. For instance, if I were to look at Lane County, or Morrow, or Jefferson, and compare that to the draft ordinance that you all have and the draft job description that's been presented, I wouldn't know what to put in and what to leave out from those, except for to bring them back to the board.
Or maybe just provide us a photoc, a copy of what, what exists.
So, so, good. So, if I could, let's, good, we're getting somewhere, I think. If I could, I'll go and find those. I can send you each a photocopy or send perhaps...
Electronic.
Yep. The other thing that could happen is you all could go out and look at these on your own and just say, "Please add this provision from here and that provision from there," if, if that's something, because it, it does sound like the board has taken, you know, taken this task upon themselves to do some of this research on your own. If there's, if there's a provision that's missing from the draft that you feel exists in another county that you found on your own, you can direct me off-record to just put that in there and then bring it back for board discussion later time.
I would, because of the, you're a very competent attorney, and with the legal things, that I might read something through, and it doesn't mean anything to me. So that's the reason I would.
Okay.
Ask that you do it, because you know a lot more about it than I do.
Very good, Mr. Chair. Good. I'll, I'll give it a try.
So we had four. We had Lane, Clatsop. Did you say Jefferson?
Jefferson, and I'm just thinking, as you go through them, look for some commonalities, because if we see the commonalities, though, those would be the things that would probably be the most important, so.
Okay, but the, the most valuable in all of what I've seen in this packet was the three-page, and this is just me, county administrator description that was here.
The, the draft code?
Yes.
Sure. And that was based primarily, if I'm, again, it was my work. I think it was based primarily on, on Clackamas.
Clackamas.
And I'll go take a look at some others.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce? Commissioner Boyce?
I mentioned a CAO that we thoroughly trust to manage our various departments and my apprehension on them having the capacity, the authority to fire those people. And what I've recognized in the last year, way before I was elected included, I'm just a little bit taken back by the notion that somehow the county departments need managed. And so I can speak to more, speak more on that later. But what I've witnessed is thorough dedication, and I'm objective when I offer that to the board, because I've spent a lot of time getting to know these people and what they're up against and what they're offering, the commitment level that they have. Back to Clatsop County, I could have this wrong, I know that's up around Astoria, but there's an article about a year and a half, two years ago, that basically referenced the turnover that they had in about 12 years, I believe. And I'll take the responsibility to verify this, that they went through eight county administrators within a 12-year period, or something very similar to that. So I'm, I'm a little bit lax in proper research of that. I wish I could give you a very specific, but I'm, I think that's fairly reliable. We've spent a lot of time on this now, since our first meeting, January 11th. And it reminds me, I'm going to try and control my frustration level here, but I'm going to just quickly go back to priorities with the amount of time we've spent on this. And in that three months, I wonder if we could point to something that we've really accomplished in those three months that the people can feel good about.
What was your subject again? That you just started with?
It gets back to priorities and what we do on our agendas.
A subject of priorities. Okay.
And where that, where I'm leaning with this, and I'll conclude, Mr. Chair, is that I'm challenging the board and myself just to be able to show the people something that we've really accomplished in this critical three months. Between the three of us, we have two years and six months' experience, but I think we're all very capable. And, you know, I just feel a real responsibility to try and bring the board to very high priority issues and post haste. So one thing I can point to is the, the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, those people worked extremely hard, put in a lot of hours. I think we showed them essentially token respect. And, but beyond that, in addition to, to their, to their work and their achievement, maybe I'm missing something, but again, something we can point to for the last three months, an effective work in policy that we have, that we've accomplished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So.
Could I make a comment?
Absolutely.
The Citizens Advisory Committee, this was in 2012, their number one, one recommendation is that we get a county manager. Mike, what's the guy's name, from Oregon Counties Association, Mike?
MacArthur.
MacArthur. He was part of that, and I talked to him about this very same issue. And he said things would probably run here a lot more smoothly. He's been to all the counties and, if there were a manager. And so rather than disregard this, I think, I think we'd be remiss in not pushing forward. I've had many, many people that I've talked to in the county that have said this is a priority. So when you say we've wasted our time, I don't know whether you exactly said those words, but that bothers me because I think we are moving forward on something that the, the county citizens do want for the most part. And when you say we have to vote for it, I'm going to have to disagree on that. We voted on a charter, that's a charter county, several years ago, and, and the people turned that down. It wasn't about a manager, and I believe council has pointed out that we are definitely legal within, legal in order, in order to put forth an administrator, so.
Well, I'm not, a couple of things. You, you referenced that 2012 study. That's five years ago. A lot has changed and happened since then. I'm also talking to a lot of people that are in favor of a county manager, but I'm also talking to a lot of people who say, wait a minute, what is our priority right now? So all this information we've worked, collected, reviewed, I'm suggesting, needs to be done after the budget process, along with a lot of other things that you have wisely recommended that we postpone till we see where we're going. So no, and then you mentioned Measure 876. That was a huge part.
Did you mention, or did Commissioner?
Excuse me.
Are we talking the charter?
You said that, I said it needs to go for a vote of the people. No, I just offered that could be an option. If it, if we really believe that that's still, that, that something's changed since Measure 876, that the people absolutely want a county administrator and don't think that that's our job.
But bottom line, we don't have to have a charter in order to have an administrator. That's, that's what I'm saying.
I agree. You're, you're correct in that, absolutely. What I want to offer is, we have, in my personal opinion and my public opinion, mixed up priorities. And we need to be spending time on finding revenue, keeping our jail open, helping the Porter Brookings, the list is huge. And I'm, I'm, I'm not going to apologize for bringing us back to that. And it is very frustrating to me that we don't seem to be able to connect on that. Thank you.
Okay. So to try and close, close this topic then, we've touched base on, I think, adequate or, you know, sufficient, significant comments from all the commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
County Council. We've talked about one, two, three, four. We talked about what the, the, the model was that was used for the proposed ordinance, draft ordinance from County Council. We've talked about asking County Council to, or, well, you know, look at the four other counties, Lane, just to repeat, Clatsop, Jefferson, and Morrow.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And if we could just do that and then get to the next, move to the next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, part of my resistance to doing the first suggestion was to look at all of them. It seemed like was what you were saying. I have been hearing that this is a, I thought, I thought this was more of an urgent priority for the board and, and what you're suggesting would, would more or less slow it down, but maybe I just misread the board's priority there. So that was my, but I think you've given me at least a manageable bit.
Okay.
And it's very helpful, and I appreciate you working with me on that feedback. But, but boy, when you were asking me to go do a global review again, I, I think that, that kind of, that kind of.
Well, you asked.
That was a little bit exasperating, Mr. Chair.
I didn't say all. Lowly, but I didn't, I didn't specify what.
I appreciate it.
So then I'm going to bring another point out. If we are going to get a manager, we need to get this in the budget. And I think that's going to be an important thing.
I agree.
So my next thing is, what are our next steps and how can we expedite?
Well, I think for County Council, at least from my perspective, to come back at a time that he is comfortable with, we're not here to, to tell you when to do anything like that.
No, I hear you. But, but I agree. Commissioner Boyce has said we ought to have a budget in place before we, we consider this position. Commissioner Gold has said that it seems like it's tied into the budget, and you've agreed.
Absolutely.
And I think that's, I think, I think to have this position and the budget that we're talking about is not the budget for now, it's the budget for the next year.
Correct.
And if this is a future position, then I think it, it makes sense to, to have this position kind of at least sussed out to the point where you can say, what's it going to take budget-wise, including perhaps additional staff, to think about that.
Well, that should be part of it.
And, and that is a, that is a point that I had not considered. I assumed our existing staff would be able to, you know, serve the county administrator that would, if, if the county administrator comes in.
And they may.
So I can, while I'm looking at things, I will also look to see what level of staffing is dedicated solely to the county administrator. I think some counties, larger ones, have a deputy county administrator. It, it does, it is a, an office that does have support staff of its own. So that's a, that's the, that's the other shoe to, to look at. So again.
Well, and that's why I think we need to look at counties that are similar, like Jefferson.
So, Mr. Chair.
That's all I have, but I'll, I'll follow up on that, and I'll add staffing to the list of analysis for the.
Are we okay with, with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Back to the budget and the hiring freeze, which should also be, should have been a salary freeze. In my personal view, to put it ahead of the, the budget process is just almost shocking to me in that we have to budget for that when we're talking about 30, maybe 60% cuts in 122 employees that we have. That's what we're hearing. And I'd, I'd sure like to encourage the board to spend more time on that issue, back to the call, Strohm, and see back proposals. And that needs to be done first. Thank you again.
Okay.
And that would be next week. I think it's on the April 5th agenda to talk about that.
Well, that is, yeah, as far as, because that's in, that is a critical path from the accounting standpoint.
And I will not have this work up for next week at all.
Well, no, I didn't expect it.
No.
But for you to get back to us with, with when you would feel comfortable with that.
Very good, Mr. Chair. Thanks very much.
Okay, so let's move on. It's 11:20. Let's move on to the second topic, which is decorum rules.
London, take the public speakers?
No, not unless the, again, this is a.
Excuse me, this was turned in before 10 o'clock.
This is a, this, this is a workshop, unless we do have, and typically the workshops are for just what we did here, for conversations from the presenters or presentations and questions and dialogue back and forth with the board. Now, what occurred at the last workshop was, my position was, we continue to do it that way. The board voted to do otherwise, and the majority of the board, as should be the case, their wish was, was pursued and, and public comments were accepted. I'm still on the position here for these, these topics, that we not accept public comment. But again, it goes back to, two, two board members can change that. So.
Mr. Chair, probably no surprise, I have a, a total differing view, and we have people in the audience that want to speak to these items.
Okay, so you would, you would like to.
And I know we can't make a motion, but I know we need to.
Well, no, but we can have consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Very important to keep public involvement and interest.
There's, there's a place for, and there will always be a place for public involvement.
Also, Mr. Chair, I apologize, these were given to me prior to the meeting. I just want to make sure you understand that that was my drop in the ball.
I think we can skip the public comment here because we could have the public comment during our regular meeting when this is actually brought up for a vote, so.
Well, if this goes, if, if any ordinance goes anywhere, there, by law, is a public comment process.
And I'm going to respectfully protest on, on that decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have, then we will, we will proceed, County Council on the.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So this is a memorandum, so this, this item has, I think, five pieces to it. One is a memorandum to the board. Then, following that is a draft order adopting the rules. Then there are draft rules. And then there is a speaker slip. And then there is a website protocol posting. We currently have an existing speaker slip. We currently have a website protocol for speaking. But what we do not have is currently any formal rules. The memorandum explains some experiences with rules that have happened in other places, but it talks about case studies. And then what it talks about is really, all the cases are about enforcing of the rules because the rules, sure, they can exist in the abstract, but the rules, when they're applied, usually result in enforcement. And the ultimate enforcement is actually arrest and removal and sometimes citation. So those are, those are the ultimate enforcements. And the interesting part is, if the board goes back to 2001, the board has had on, as a county ordinance, the ability of the chair to have people be removed from the boardroom. So there, there has been on the county's books, and the ordinance that's on the county's books is, is very similar to the ordinances that were applied in, in the cases. Loud disruptions, disrupting noise, violent or distracting actions, refusal to obey rules of conduct, refusal to obey lawful orders of presiding officer. And this ordinance adopted by the county back in '01 said it is the duty of the presiding officer to maintain order during board meetings. So that's, that's been ordinance on, on the books, establishing some standards of conduct and some prohibited conduct in board meetings for, for a long time. What this memo, it, it talks about how that's been applied, and essentially the courts require actual disruption. And in some of the cases, an actual disruption has been determined to be hijacking of a meeting, which means, you know, not obeying time limits, not sticking to subject, and interrupting the chair when the chair is conducting business as presiding officer. So those are things that the courts have recognized are enforceable rules of decorum. And so we have our ordinance. Our ordinance allows the board to adopt rules to carry out the ordinance. And so, and these rules, I believe, were submitted for a meeting but then continued. And so the rules of decorum are, they were, they were, they've actually been set out here in this presentation on a specific item. They have a Curry County logo at the top. It says Curry County Board of Commissioners, Rules of Decorum for Meetings. And these should sound familiar because they were included in a packet probably a month or a little more than a month ago. But it says, "We will maintain professionalism and decorum at public meetings. As elected officials, we agree that representing the citizens of Curry County is a trust of the community worthy of professional and courteous behavior by all is a standard at every board meeting. Standard rules of protocol for deliberative bodies will apply. Members shall be addressed by their title. Speakers shall be recognized by the chair before speaking. We will listen to our citizens. The board agrees that Curry County citizens must have an opportunity to address subjects on a board meeting agenda consistent with the Oregon regulations for public meeting participation and the Oregon United States constitutions." And again, the Oregon United States constitutions are the overarching documents that describe the permissible scope of rules and the permissible scope of enforcement. And those are usually the arguments that are made in the court cases. And the court cases, after considering those arguments, are requiring an actual disruption. And again, the court cases have held that the hijacking of the meetings and those kind of things. Now, these rules, again, professional, courteous behavior, recognized by the chair before speaking, addressed by their title, there, I think there was some commentary of whether that would result in a fine if someone was not addressed by title. The cases say you have to have actual disruption of, of the business. And then it says, "We'll practice if." So I think in reality, the application of the rules, it would be hard, there would have to have been some actual disruption by simply not addressing someone by their title. These are, these are rules of decorum that, that should be followed. In, in extreme cases, they can result in citation or arrest. But again, those are, those are extreme cases, and the memorandum that I provided you gave the examples of some of those. "We will practice efficient decision-making. The board agrees that board meetings are for timely decision-making action and votes. The board agrees to move questions when discussion is repetitive. Board meetings shall last no more than..." So this is a departure from what we're, what we're doing. And this is a, it says we would follow rules generally applicable to deliberative bodies. Bodies can make rules for time. This is rule number four under the proposed rules. "Board meetings shall last no more than two and a half hours unless extended by unanimous decision of the board." So currently, this meeting started at 10 o'clock, and it's now 11:30. We've got an hour and a half. So by this, this meeting will have to be over in an hour, you know, unless extended by unanimous decision. What I've seen is that there are time limitations, but the extension of the time limitations is, is not necessarily unanimous. So that's an item for discussion for the board, if the board wants to impose a time limit and what would be the mechanism, a unanimous vote or otherwise, for extending the time limitation. We'll practice and expect. "We'll practice and expect professional behavior. Board recognizing varying viewpoints," and I think we've had a few of those today, "are healthy for public discourse. Regardless of agreement, polite behavior at all meeting by participants is required." And I have probably been the most unruly person at this meeting today. "The board agrees to listen with courtesy to board meeting participants. Likewise, meeting participants will be expected to act in a considerate manner. Deviations from this standard can be responded to in kind." And that's a, that's something where it, it's not encouraged, but it is recognized that, you know, if, if, if the board is, you know, being mistreated, the board can respond in kind, but it's, it's not encouraged. The board has other options. Compliance with the Curry County Code, Article One, Division Seven, Maintenance of Order and Decorum in Commissioner Meetings, and that's the ordinance that's been on the county book since two thousand and one. It says that the board will comply with all of that. "All persons, including staff, county public officers and elected officials, have not prepared an agenda routing slip yet who wish to address the board shall sign a speaker slip prior to the commencement of the meeting. The approved speaker slip is attached here to as Exhibit One, the provisions of which are incorporated herein by reference. Boards provide a public notice of this requirement by posting on the county's website, including this requirement on speaker slips, and through discussions at publicly noticed workshops and meetings." And we're going to go over that speaker slip in a little bit. "If a speaker slip is not completely filled out and signed in a timely, legible fashion, the person will not be allowed to address the board unless approved by a majority of the board. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless extended by consensus of the board." So one of the, one of the implied, and perhaps not expressed, but implied in here, is that this applies to business meetings and not work sessions. And it may make sense for us to, and the board, the board doesn't have, you know, today we, we have a, whether it's been a practice or a policy of, the, the speaker slips are for, on an agenda, on our regular meetings, we have an agenda item for public comments. And so it's, it's expressed and anticipated that there will be public comments at those business meetings. At work sessions, we really, we don't publish an agenda like that. The agenda doesn't have a public comment period on it, so the, the comment cards, and so the board, as it is doing here, has, has by consensus said, okay, we will, or not in this case, but in the last one they did. It may make sense for the board to add, you know, a provision here that workshops are generally not for public comment unless by consensus of a majority of the board, something like that, so that we can add that in here. Because it seems to be a, a, a place where we have or haven't done that, or we have and haven't done it. So I think having a rule about that would make sense because I've anticipated this to apply to our agendas where we have a agenda item for public comments. We don't have those on workshops. Therefore, by implication, there is no public comment period at workshops, but if the board wants to allow it, I think they have the discretion. So that might be something to add here. "The chair of the board can order cessation of repetitive or cumulative commentary, and that's standard protocol for most deliberative bodies. Public comment period of board meetings shall not exceed one and a half hour except by motion of a, for, affirmative majority of the vote of the board." So this is, and any such motion would be to extend the public comment by a specific amount of time. So again, what we're trying to do is get to a reasonable time for conducting the county business, deliberate, eliminate repetition, have orderly and courteous business. Persons who disrupt county business are subject to discipline. So, so what this says is persons who disrupt county business are subject to discipline, including at nonlimits to warning, censure, citation, and fine or ejection as appropriate in discretion of the chair or the board. "The chair of the board may recess or adjourn the meeting in its discretion." So this is really the, more or less the enforcement. It describes options for the board, a warning, a censure, a citation, and a fine or ejection as appropriate in the discretion of the chair.
Could you please say all those again?
Sure. A warning, a censure, citation or fine or ejection as appropriate in a discretion of the board. "And the chair of the board may recess or adjourn the meeting in its discretion." So going back to one of the cases, there was an individual who was not recognized by the chair of a meeting, but who nevertheless approached the podium and addressed the board. And the chair told the person they were out of order, they warned them, they attempted to use her gavel, and I think almost to a humorous degree, that case, yeah, that case describes that the chair, or in this case, it was the mayor, was banging his gavel so vigorously that the head broke off with a gavel.
So when was this, may I ask? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
It did not break off.
It wasn't here. It was not, it was not one of our...
Not one of our meetings.
I didn't think so. Sure. I read some of those city references.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So then, and then what happens is the person still kept speaking, so the, the mayor just adjourned the meeting, but the person stayed there, and when they came back, the person was there, and the testimony was the person was not going to leave until they were allowed to speak, which by the rules, they weren't allowed to. So then the person was ordered, you know, arrested, and then resisted arrest and was cited for those type of things. But again, heaven forbid that we get to that level, but, but that was one example of an actual disruption, where the person would not allow the board or the chair to continue its meeting until they got addressed. And then there was another example of where, and this was odd, and it wasn't in a county...
No more examples.
But that was actual case law.
Yeah, it's a case law.
I'm sorry, Court Counsel, a little bit...
Okay. Well, they're, they're in, they're in the materials, and they're, they're, they're cases. So, so again, but it's, it's not just the breaking of a rule. So for instance, I think there was some concern on the part of some, some folks, and maybe some of which who wanted to appear and speak, but again, as the board has said, if the board moves to adopt these, there will be a public commentary at a regular meeting. This is just a work session. But there was some concern of if someone could get a citation just for not calling the chair by their title or a commissioner and using a first name. I think it would have to reach the level of an actual disruption. So I think there would be a progression of facts and events that would lead to an actual disruption. So those would be of kind of the things. And again, our rules, and it's very standard that a chair presides over a meeting, and a chair sees to the enforcement of the protocols and, and running the meeting, and it has a lot of discretion to regulate the conduct of the meeting. And that's standard, and that's been on our books since oh-one. The other thing that's been on our books, because that, that's an ordinance of the county, the other county ordinance, because one of the things that the proposed rules and part of this discussion is about is that the county has the option to issue a citation for a fine to people for violating a county ordinance. And that's also been on our books for years and years and years as well. And so, and so there's various different enforcement mechanisms that the, that the board and the, and the, and the chair can use. So either, either the board or the chair can, can do those items. So those are the, and then disruptions resulting in a fine imposed on county elected or appointed officials shall not be paid from county funds. So the idea is they're be acting, you know, outside of their county functions or not in respect with county rules, and therefore they're going outside of their scope, and therefore it's a personal citation and fine, personal to them. So those are the rules, and that's my feedback on those. I'd like to go over the speaker slip if I could. There's a, and the speaker slip again, this was taken from our current speaker slip, as well as a speaker slip that was provided in a board of commissioners meeting about a month ago or maybe six weeks ago. And basically, this is the public meeting sign-in comment card. And again, this says public meeting, and I think what we're talking about there is business meeting and not, not a workshop. "Anyone wishing to make one three-minute presentation about a public hearing agenda item or any topic of concern under the public comment..." So again, under public comment, and this is where we don't have public comment at work sessions. "...must fill out this card, sign the bottom, and give it to the minute clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting." So again, handing it to a commissioner, probably not the best way to go. And then only one card will be, or if the commissioner gets it, should hand it to the minute clerk. The card must be signed in order to testify. You give a name, an address, an agenda topic. The address is optional. "Rules for the public comment, unless extended or limited by the chairperson, maximum is three minutes. You cannot yield time to others. Public comments are not allowed on any pending land use application except during the stated public hearing on that issue. Public comments must be about a matter on the agenda, public hearing, or a matter of county concern presented under public comments. Speakers shall conduct themselves with respect. The board or chair reserve the right to declare any comment containing profane, obscene, abusive, threatening, or slanderous content as out of order. The county is not obligated to respond to questions to commissioners or staff during the public comment period." So essentially, it's, it's not necessarily a back and forth or a debate at that public comment period. It's, you can put your comments on the record, and the board can address them at, at their discretion. "The chair of the board may enforce these rules by warning, censure, fine of two fifty or more, or ejecting from the meeting any person, including elected or appointed officials who disrupt the meeting by violation of these rules or otherwise." So again, there could be a un, you know, specified way to disrupt the meeting that technically isn't a violation of a rule, but nevertheless ends in disrupting. And then, you know, by signing this card, I agreed to abide by the rules of the county code prohibiting unreasonably loud, disruptive language, engaging violent, distracting action, and refusal to obey presiding officer that disrupts a meeting. So it still, even by this, it requires an actual disruption. That would be in the first instance for the board and the chair to determine, but ultimately there would be a citation if someone pleads not guilty, then a, a circuit court judge would likely decide if the conduct resulted in disruption under the case law. So that's really the nuts and bolts of this, and this does happen. It happens from time to time. The cases are, you know, numerous, but actually, when you, when you think of the number of public meetings that go on, both in this county, at every city, at all the ports around the country, and just multiply that by all the, all the different public meetings that go on, I think it's really rare that you get to the level of an ejection or a citation, but it is permissible, and, and it does happen when there's an actual disruption. The last thing I wanted to talk about before taking board comments was, there is a, we, we have on our website, when, when you look at the agenda, there's also a protocol for speaking at commissioners' meetings. And this is the one, and we even have a sign out in front of the, the, of the door that says, "Quiet, please." And this protocol says, "Please turn off cell phones and pagers." And that's not a, that's not one of our rules or, or anything like that. And would someone's cellphone ringing once or twice be an actual disruption? Possibly not. But if, if someone was sitting here and their phone was going off, or they're playing a radio, or who knows what, it, it could be a disruption. You could have that person, you know, removed. "Members of the public may address the presiding officer of the board of commissioners under citizen's comments. Generally, a maximum of three minutes is allowed per speaker." Now, this is interesting because it says, "May address the presiding officer of the board of commissioners under citizen's comments." And so this is actually, I think I took this right from our, our website, that it's already there, and I might have changed it. I think that was a pre-existing, a pre-existing protocol that was, that, that is there. The, addressing the presiding officer of the board is the general protocol. When, when earlier in one of the rules, it says, "The board will follow standard protocols of deliberative bodies." And about a year ago, we wrestled with whether we would adopt Roberts' rules, or there was another rule, I couldn't remember. Mr. Chair, you had provided it. But, but either way, the typical, the typical protocol for addressing a deliberative body is for speakers to address the chair, and, oh, I'm going to divulge something, but I watch sometimes the British Parliament meetings on TV, and I don't know if anyone here has ever watched those, but if, if you ever do...
Yeah, they don't get anything done either.
If you ever do watch those, thanks, Commissioner, but if you ever do watch those, I would have called you Right Honorable Commissioner, and I would have said, "Mr. Chair, the Right Honorable Commissioner is correct," or something like that. But, but they practice very formal ways of addressing people. They address the chair, the, the people wait to be recognized, and instead of a speaker going to a commissioner back and forth, I'm, you know, we had a revolution to get away from under the thumb of those guys, but, and I'm going off track a little bit here, but, but that's where I think some of this comes from. And we, we, we do want to have, you know, people try to follow protocols and procedures, and these are standards. And the odd part is, you know, I, I've been to college, I've been to high school, I've been to elementary school, law school, all these things. There's not a class in any of those about Roberts' Rules of Order. Maybe there is, but I either was sleeping or didn't take it. But I think you all know what I'm saying. You all have been in a lot of these boards. This is probably none of yours, first deliberative body that you've been sitting on, and usually they follow Roberts' Rules or some other, and then you have to learn those rules. And that's a pretty thick book, and it's full of a lot of little details. But the general idea is to have courtesy, to address the chair, to, to, you know, also to follow the, the, the rules of, of the, of the meeting. So again, we, we, this just really says that, please stay on topic. That's the other thing, you know, we, we have an agenda, we have topics. If you want to talk about a different topic, you put it on agenda for another, another time. And then, again, the speaker will be asked to return to the topic or be seated. So those are some of the things, and, and this is a form that will be posted online. And it also says, "A use of profanity over loud, argumentative, accusatory, insulting comments are not permitted, and if disruptive..." And again, focusing from the court cases on First Amendment rights and freedom of speech. Again, we did get out under that rule. So we do have those freedoms, but we still are not allowed to disrupt. So if it is disruptive, may be cause for removal. The presiding officer board will determine violation, subject to a fine. And this says, "Subject to a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine." Our, our order in our, in our code that's been, that says, "A violation of the county code can be a Class A violation, subject to a two-thousand-dollar fine." That is the law, but the board can set a, a different level of fine for violations. And so this is just proposing a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. Now, a continued disruption or a separate disruption may be cause for another fine, so they can accumulate. So really, this piece pre-existed. I amended it to reflect some of the changes. The rules that I went through are prior rules of the board from, from a prior meeting that were also amended to reflect some of the changes from the research. And really, the, the enforcement options, even though we're talking about them today, the way I read our code, these enforcement options of ejection and fine have been on our books since the early two thousands. So really, none of it is really ground-shaking to me as a lawyer who's seen these kind of cases before, but it may be, you know, it may rub some people the wrong way, but I think, you know, most people know that people have been kicked out of public meetings. I don't think any of ours since I've been here, but, but it can happen. It's happened elsewhere. I hope it doesn't happen here. But again, this was brought at the request of the board. It was actually a continuation of an item that the board has already put on an agenda, so we're just here to talk about it some more. And then, as the board has mentioned, before it gets adopted, the board will have a public comment period at a regularly scheduled meeting if the board gives direction to bring it back. That's all I had unless there's questions.
And this would be an ordinance, or part of this would also be an ordinance, correct? Or incorrect? Or we're, are we amending any ordinances or...
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The way it's set up now, we're not amending any ordinances. We're adopting an order which would establish the rules which carry out the ordinance that's already on the book, so...
Because if it were, then it would be even more of a procedure if it were, if it had to do with an ordinance, as far as comments, readings, and so forth for future meetings before that were approved.
Right.
Okay. But that's not the case here.
Didn't you mention that one of the ordinances said you could set up a set of rules?
Um, refusal to obey a lawful order that has been approved by the majority of the board. And so what we're doing here is proposing an order approved by the majority of the board. So, and that would be establishing the rules, so...
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Uh, Council Huddle, very thorough job. Where to start? You mentioned, Mr. Huddle, the revolution. People came here because since time began, human nature, they don't want to be controlled by anyone or any others. History is full of thousands of examples. I wish there was a different word for priority, but Commissioner Huxley, this not to quarrel with you, when you decide to run for commissioner, and your reasons may have been very valid, you challenged the previous board that they're unresponsive, didn't answer your questions, and lack transparency. Related to that, the people that we serve, hopefully the people we humbly serve, they know the county ship is sinking, and we spend our time on more rules, more control. And then, what we just did twenty-five minutes ago, we told the public, we don't have, we, we devalue... And then, what we just did 25 minutes ago, we told the public, we don't have, we devalue any participation you have because of the procedures here. And that really rubs me the wrong way. If we wait till we're closer to making a vote, and then we accept their public testimony, it might, they could at least partially interpret that as a little bit late. Premature emphasis on a county manager. Meanwhile, the vets homelessness grows, poverty increases, and the public sees this Board right now as just as dysfunctional as the previous 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Thank you, that's all.
Any comments? Commissioner Gold?
Just going through this. Number one, I, well, I guess, I think we just need some common sense when we look at number one, addressing by title and so forth. I think as long as we're respectful, making a big deal out of little nitpicky items is not appropriate, and I don't think that's been the case. And then number four, it says, "Board meetings shall last more than two and a half hours."
Shall not last.
Shall not last more than two and a half hours unless, and it says unanimous. I would prefer majority there instead of unanimous. And I'm not sure I agree with fines. It would have to be really, really bad in order to give someone a fine. But I've got to say, in attending some of the meetings, I've been appalled by some of the behavior I've seen. This is mainly before I came on Board, but I've seen some of it since I've been on Board that I would not agree with. So I think we do need something in place to try to take care of this. Not that we're trying to be, I don't know, the big authorities or something, but I think we need to have, and I've heard comments from other people about the behavior in the meetings is not real wonderful, so...
Will you, if I may? Commissioner Gold used the word authoritative, and, you know, that's the root word of authoritarian, and that's back to my point with which people rebel. And it surely doesn't build bridges to encourage them. As bad as we need their input, as bad as we need their involvement, these decorum, we'll say, which I am of course for, and the respect and the courtesy that goes with that, but in an indirect way, maybe a direct way, we're actually disrespecting the public by saying we, and I'm glad to hear you say that you're not for fines. And I would challenge all of us here to go back in history of this Board, maybe even prior to 2000, to see if there was ever really a legitimate time, since we've spent this much time now on two different meetings, if there was ever really a legitimate time where somebody needed to be removed. I don't want any bad language. I don't want any disrespect. I have always referred to, encouraged friends, anybody else I know, to refer to this Board in a respectful way. And I think that's, I think that was, that is my job, and I think that's bearing fruit. I don't think we need to go, "This has got to be done, and this is the policy," and I'm afraid it'll burn bridges. I know it will. Thank you.
I guess I'm kind of looking at it like a schoolteacher. If you don't have something in place...
These are not children. Be careful.
Well, I'm hoping they're not, but...
These are human beings that see the collapse of this county. I'm sorry. That's a little bit of an outburst. I apologize.
I would like to suggest that we direct County Council, certainly, I think the points were absolutely warranted, to add some language regarding workshops, just so there's no question. You know, even though a workshop is a public meeting, as a general meeting, as a special meeting, but to add reference to that, and then bring this back to the Board for approval of an order.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Did you just say you might amend your requests and allow people to give public testimony during the workshop meetings? Did I misunderstand?
Well, we have examples. You only have to go back to the last workshop, one whole week, where typically, again, my comments were that normally, we do not, because the workshop, a perk of a workshop, number one, is not to make a decision. It's for a presenter to present, or presenters to present information on a topic or topics to the Board, have dialogue back and forth, and in the situation, and not to have public comments, because then we're going off, we're distracting from the purpose. It's not that anything's being decided. We cannot make a decision, a formal decision in a workshop. We can give direction, we can have consensus. But to your question, if there is a request by a member of the Board as, or an issue made or constructive comments made, then it can go to the Board, and the Board, again, with the power of two, can direct, or for that meeting, or vote consensus for that meeting, that public comments be held. And that was the case last week. So I think, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, yes. I want to just make sure that I'm on record here that the value of the public comment period in all meetings, in the interest of transparency, answering questions and being responsive, is absolutely, I can't put a high enough value on it. So I'm in favor of anytime people want to speak, they're encouraged to come here and participate in the process. Thanks again.
But I think, again, we're laying out here the typical, and it was interesting not to...
A workshop description is working, and that means getting every person to the...
Kind of point of where you're actually interrupting and things.
Okay, we'll just let it go.
You know what? I'm gonna let that go.
Okay, so will I. Commissioner Boyce? So back to my, you know, comments on the additional language from County Council, I think is definitely appropriate, just to alleviate any claim, omission of a term workshop, and to bring this back to the Board in a final order for approval, or consideration and approval before the Board. When that time is with everything else with County Council's schedule, is doable for So I'd like, you know, consensus for that.
I'm okay with that.
The boys?
No, thank you.
Okay, so that would be consensus from two County Councils.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Do we need to give you any further particulars?
No, because the real decision would be made. I'll put it on an agenda at a future time when I have it, some of these changes made. And the changes that I've noted from the workshop today are the majority vote to extend a meeting beyond two and a half hours, and also including language that the workshops don't have items for public comment, and therefore, no public comments are anticipated. But if consensus of the Board, then public comments can be allowed at discretion of the Board.
Correct. Okay.
I'm gonna add to that, that I'm opposed to limiting the time of any meeting within reason. The, and I've stated it before, the feeling of being rushed, that we only meet once a week in a public process, I don't know why that is important. And important decisions can be abbreviated, and not good enough follow-through. And my point was, excuse me, when I interrupted, you get a roundtable discussion, you get as many people to be involved as you can. That's how you solve problems. That's how you find solutions. Thank you again.
So it is 11:59. We'll adjourn this workshop, and if we could take just a, let's say, a five-minute break, we have a, what will ultimately begin as a public meeting scheduled, you know, or a special meeting scheduled for 12, which will go in, the only subject on that is for an executive session. So we will begin as a public meeting, we'll go into executive session, come back out, but we'll take a five-minute break. But we have formally adjourned the workshop.
Excuse me, do you have an estimate about how long that executive session will be?
I have no idea.
I'm gonna ask to be excused at 4:30, because I have to meet the agenda routing slip deadline.
Well, I can, I think I could, with confidence, guarantee you this will not go until 4:30.
Okay, thank you.
At least not with me. Okay, so we are adjourned. Thank you. And we'll be back in five minutes.
Five minutes?
We'll come back at 12:10 then. Thank you.
Oops, forgot the microphone. That's a first.